Okay, I just left a text for Russ. He might have trouble getting on. Hi Sarah. So, all right, call to order. We have the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting July 6th, and then the special meeting July 22nd.
I've read them both. They seem to be in order. And I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting July 6th, and as well the special meeting July 22nd.
Okay, I just see Russ is on. Russ?
Hello?
How you doing? All right, Jim just made a motion to approve the two sets of minutes.
I could approve one set.
Right. Okay, the first one?
I wasn't at the second meeting because of our business engagement.
Right. All right, will you make a second on the first?
Yes, I'll make a second to approve the minutes from the regular meeting from July.
Okay, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and Jim, you already made a motion to accept the special meeting minutes. I will second that. Is there any discussion or anything on those?
No.
No, without, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
And Russ, you're abstaining?
On the minutes from the?
The special meeting.
The Thursday meeting, yes.
Okay. All right. So we move on. The tax collectors' report, the one that I sent you, I was in here with the tax collector today, and she had, she asked if we could add two more to the request for refunds of property taxes. You had one, there were five, so now I'm asking for seven. And what is included in that would be James McVeigh for $13.62, and ACAR leasing for $233.92. So it brings-
Okay.
It brings the total up to $322.71 versus just the five that I sent you before for the $75.
I'll make a motion to approve to add those to the tax collector agenda.
To add those, okay.
To the report.
Right, okay. Jim, you want to second that?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now I need a motion to approve all seven.
I make a motion to approve all seven on the tax collectors' report for, what is it? We're giving them?
The refund of over-
Refunds, right, overpayment refunds.
Access payment, correct. All right.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have communications from the public? No. Okay. We'll move on. We have commissions, boards, appointments. I still don't have anybody. I know that ZBA is working really hard in speaking to several people. Zoning was new. I did put it out there, and so, I don't know, Jim, maybe you want to speak to it because a couple of people were interested in that.
What we normally do in zoning in the past is if a regular member steps down, we fill that position with an alternate, with the alternate that's been on the alternate list for the longest length of time. And if no one, no alternates want to move up, then we would have to fill it from outside. But normally in the past, we filled a full-time position with an alternate, and then we, we look to find someone to fill the alternate position.
Yeah. So do you have someone, I have my list here, that I was looking for. Do you have someone that you would like to move up tonight?
Well, the next one in line is Bill Horrigan. He's been an alternate the longest. I spoke with Bill last week, and he said he would move up, and that would create an opening for, for the alternate position.
Okay. All right. Russ, you want to make a motion on that?
I'll make a motion to move Bill Horrigan up to a permanent member on the zoning board.
Correct.
Regular member, yeah. Okay, I'll second that. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And I'm abstaining.
Okay, good. And I, I will get in touch with Nanette again. I did leave her a message to see if she made any headway, but it'll just have to wait another month. All right, so under business, our ARP money plan. Invited Sarah from the ambulance to come. And, you know, we really do have to have another meeting between the selectmen and the Board of Finance to come up with this plan that we have. And in speaking with Sarah, and you can join in anytime, we had talked about buying the AEDs for them. Sarah mentioned the stretcher, which I didn't realize that is in their new ambulance, is on loan because they are upgrading, upgrading it, and they haven't, I guess, don't have it available yet. Is that right, Sarah?
That's correct. The, the one we've got is on loan because we're waiting for the newest model to come out. It got delayed a little bit. We thought we'd have it, but it's still, they've allowed us to float along with a loner for the year. A new stretcher is approximately $25,000.
All right, so in, in the conversation with the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen when we met, it came up about, you know, possibly making a contribution or towards the building. And if you, and you were not at that meeting, we've had a discussion, but maybe you could just fill in where that is, the addition to the firehouse.
Prior to COVID, we had moved forward with a set of plans that we were working through the different approvals for, through the various commissions, et cetera. The plans call for an addition to the left side of the firehouse, if you're looking at it, at the bays. So it would be basically the back end, putting two bays double deep onto the firehouse with just storage and the capacity to keep all of our equipment and vehicles under one roof. We would be giving up the bay that we currently have at the firehouse where the ambulance is, back to the fire department, and we would be giving them the bay back at the old firehouse for their needs as well. The idea of it being double deep is that all four pieces of equipment, our trailer, our pickup truck, our two ambulances would fit. And the fire department would probably put their pickup truck in the bay that we're currently in at the firehouse. If in the future the fire department ever needed to buy something longer, we could reconfigure where we park everything. And so it would be useful for both departments. The idea is to keep it pretty straightforward and simple. Storage space in terms of cabinets, a little workbench, some closets, and the ability to park everything under the one roof. Nothing elaborate, no, no water or anything like that, just-
Great idea.
We feel that that meets the best needs of both departments, and, and the future needs potentially of both departments. Putting us all under one roof would be a major accomplishment as opposed to running around like mad trying to do anything. To work on our ambulance or do anything on it, we have to pull it out because you can't work on it in the bay. It just doesn't, doors don't open, things like that. So we've been looking for a really long time as to what we were going to do. We looked at different pieces of property, ultimately determined through discussions with both organizations that it makes the most sense for us to remain at the firehouse and to work with that building and work together and be under one roof with them because we coordinate and do so many calls together and work so much hand in hand. So that's sort of where we're at.
We agree. How close, how close are we to possibly getting a set of plans drawn up?
The plans are drawn up. They are completed.
Good.
Yes.
This money could be used for that?
Yes.
Wow.
I mean, what, what we want to do is, we do want to meet again because, to make, just to finalize going forward. The, the unknown with this is the plans are good enough to go out to bid, correct? We got to get a bid document together. The, the thing with this money, it has to be spent by 2024, so that, that addition would have to be completed by then. And that is the unknown. So we just have to talk about it going forward, so.
I think we could meet that timeframe for sure.
Yeah.
That's not an issue. We were hoping to break ground within the next year, so certainly speed that up. We could try and bring, et cetera. So we could certainly spend that money by then.
Okay, so what happened to you is with the capital campaign? I don't know if that all of this money is going to go towards that.
No, no, we're not looking for, to be the only recipient. I know that other people in town, other agencies, et cetera, nonprofits, but the ambulance was thinking of running a capital campaign to try and raise some of the funds within the community to supplement the cost of this. And that letter is just about ready to go out. So we are,
Okay.
it's in its final, final stages. So that's pretty close.
Good.
So now with the architect that you're working with, will he do a bid document?
I reached out to him last week, and he must be away. I haven't heard back.
Okay. Because that would, we would definitely want to know.
Yeah, yeah. And if not, I can get a bid, I can, you know, the plans were enough that different builders were able to put together a spec for us as to what it would cost. They were detailed enough. So I think that it should be pretty straightforward to do a bid doc.
Okay, good. All right. Um, okay, then, you know, when we meet again, I'm going to take this back because those were some of the questions.
Maybe Sarah could join us, the Board of Finance and Board of Selectmen?
Yep.
Whatever you would like.
That'd be good to have you there, yeah?
All right, because when we looked at, you know, the, the friends of the senior center and friends of the library, possibly, I did not get an answer back from our health department because I did ask her about that. The this is with the COG, and we were going to, this was going to be the subject of what some of the things the other towns were looking at, and if there was something that had to do with infrastructure as far as, you know, internet service, et cetera, that we could all put a little piece in that might help us all out. But I, that's on the 11th, and so I have to, you know, report back on that. But at least we're heading in the right direction, and I will, what I'll do is I will schedule something right after that meeting. You know, maybe the, let's see, I'll get with the Board of, the Board of Finance meets on the 17th. We could, we could go in on their meeting if that works.
Fine with me.
Yeah, okay. All right. Well, thank you, Sarah. I just wanted the others to hear.
Yeah.
All right, did you have a good vacation?
I did.
Good. Yeah, good. Okay. Moving on. We have a members' equity check from KERMA. That is our, where we have all of our insurances. And this year, we is, we are getting a check for $4,329. And what they always would like you to use it for is for something that has to do with risk, that will alleviate risk, and in the past, we have used it for our speed signs, et cetera. But right now, we're also, we will be looking at the cameras for the police. Something came out today about another opening for grants for that, the cameras that they have to wear. So I got to look into that. I just got that today, but this could be used for that purpose and for something else that we come into, but right now it's just going to go right into the general fund. But it's one of the larger checks that we've gotten. So KERMA is doing really, really well. I just wanted to report on that. Okay, vaccine clinic. Geraldine has been working with, oh, I printed it and I hung it across the street. And then I just, just had it here. I just reported on it, and I was looking at it. A vaccine clinic, but it's going to be in September, and it's going to be at the senior center from 3:30 to 7:30. Let me just get when that is. That's going to be September 9th. And it's a free vaccine clinic in Roxbury. Walk-ins are welcome. There's going to be no, no appointments, et cetera. And then Sarah also found one in Torrington. It's an hour each day. And if it's, I, I just don't know if our people walk, it's walk-ins, if they're going to get there on time or not, but I will certainly put that out there for them.
All walk-ins, and the first couple of people get concert tickets.
Oh, really?
Who's playing? I'm fascinated again.
There you go. Dustin Lynch, Straight No Chaser, Thomas Rhett, NF, whatever that is.
Never mind. I was hoping the Who.
Sorry. It's called Connecticut Rock the Shot. So it's various health clinics are, are, have gotten tickets and they're able to give them away, so.
I did, I did read about that. I didn't realize that this was one of those.
Yes. I thought maybe that might entice some of the younger folk to go with those concerts or something like that.
Yeah. All right. Okay, just wanted to get that out there. Okay, the Housing Authority, and now, and Jim, I think that I'm, I'm calling it the wrong thing. Shouldn't it be the Housing Trust, or am I sticking with Housing Authority?
I think we'll stick with Housing Authority.
Okay.
Housing Trust is actual money that is put aside in a trust to subsidize first-time homebuyers and renters. Housing Authority, I believe I've got it correct, is a group of people that tries to instigate and promote affordable housing. And it's, it's interesting because the way I look at it, there's affordable housing, and there's low-income housing, and it's two different things. Affordable, we have a a formula that they use for Litchfield County that creates the number that's affordable. In low-income housing, you're actually, you're just, somebody's subsidizing you, and you're paying 30% of your whole income, no more than 30%, and it could be less. So I think Housing Authority, and we're looking at affordable housing to satisfy what the state is asking us to do, to put, have a plan put together. We have yet to sit down and talk about it. Peter and I've got to get together with the outside people, which I haven't heard from Charlie and Sue. So I think possibly Peter and I have to be the driving force to get this off the ground.
Well, um, I, I, and I, I would like to expand it to more people to be involved in this steering committee. First of all, at the last meeting, you gave me the okay to apply for a grant through the state to get someone in here to, what, be the, like a moderator type person within this group. And I found out, and, and so we were looking at Jocelyn coming back from the COG and helping us do that. If we don't take someone from the COG, then we have to do an RFP, and it just takes, I'd rather just stay this way, this way, because it's easier. She's also working with some of the towns. She's already in Morris. They're almost finished, actually.
I heard that Morris is pretty much completed theirs.
Yeah, they have a draft out now, and so she has handled that and, and several of the other towns.
Yeah. No, we got to all coordinate it and get together and move forward.
Yeah. So I already got the okay from the state that they would approve the grant, so.
Okay.
So then we can now move forward. So what I need to do is tell her who are, who is our group. I know that, yes, there are other people that have come forward that would like to be involved with this, and possibly the Housing Authority. We have Larry Wagner, who we, I worked with many years because we got the grants that, under DECD, when he was working, you know, through the state. So he would be a good person to have.
Yeah.
I believe Kathy Wolfe, the Stoffakers. We, we need somebody from, like you said, planning, zoning, wetlands, that would be good. And anyone else that, well, the land trusts could certainly be involved.
And eventually, this will get turned over to all those people other than commission members. And once, once we get it organized and off the ground, then the Housing Authority can be made up of Kathy Wolfe and the Stoffakers and all those people on their own.
Yep. Well, but I, so I, I'm going to extend the invite to those people also.
Yeah.
That's okay with you. And if, I mean, anyone from the public can certainly, you know, come forward and be on this planning for-
So you're going to contact Jocelyn? You're going to?
I'm going to let Jocelyn know the list of names, and, you know, I put it in the email blast and, you know, a couple of times, so.
Right.
Just, but we do have some people that are interested, so that'll be, that'll be good.
Yeah.
All right. And, you know.
If I can, Barb?
Yeah.
I just want to correct voices. Lou Marie's article about your Thursday meeting, where it did say I wasn't there. I was at a wetland meeting for a client. And I, I let everybody know that, but it said I was opposed to it. I was worried about zoning. Lou, Lou Marie, you got, you got your stories mixed up. I am totally for a Housing Authority. A Housing Authority is like a land trust, only people donate money to buy land to build houses as opposed to buying land to preserve. I'm totally for it. Never said I was against. What I'm against is desegregate Connecticut, which I like to call disintegrate Connecticut, because it's run by a group of really, their, their progressive actions will not help the town of Roxbury. And it, what it is, is to take away our zoning powers and give it to the state. It's being run by the wife of Harford's mayor. Harford has a mil rate of 92. We have a mil rate of 15.85. You think I want them running my town? I don't think so. So that's what I'm opposed to. I'm not opposed to a Housing Authority. Thanks to Jim Conway, zoning has already made changes to make it easier because we do need more rentals in this town. And I have young kids, and I'm all for it. And I just want to make sure that you are correct when you report. I am not opposed to any of this. I'm opposed to disintegrate Connecticut. That's what I'm opposed to. Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, Russ.
Um, okay, hopefully that she heard you on that. All right, so I'm just going to get some names that I have, and you know what? The, the, the participants can certainly change over time.
Sure.
All right, okay, and that's the Affordable Housing Plan Steering Committee. That is really what we were just talking about. I kind of jumped the gun there. The Housing Authority, there are people that are interested. They do want to be part of the steering committee. Maybe I should have made that a little bit clearer. And so certainly we'll invite them to be. All right, moving on, I received a letter from our senior center director. She is going to be retiring. We did speak, and we are looking at, as of October 1. And I will get that advertised. And she said she would stay on, you know, to help whomever if, if it went past that, so. Linda has, oh my gosh, I had the years here. She's been here a number of years, actually, and what I think that she's, is 14 years, actually. And I have to say that during the COVID, she had to learn Zoom. I know she was really, really out of her comfort zone just to keep things going in the senior center. But we also, and she did it, she accomplished, you know, as best she could with some exercise classes and trying to get people to be able to use Zoom in that, in that avenue there. So now the senior center is opening up, and, you know, hopefully we can get it back up and running and some additional things. I think what we need to think about is the aging population of this community, and we have some very active seniors. So, you know, we could be offering more. There could be more outreach. And I think that that's, you know, something we can look at in a new director moving forward. But I want to thank her for all her years of service, absolutely. Um, okay.
How do we fill this position? Do we put out requests for applications or?
Yep.
Post, post the job?
Post it, yep. In the paper, and then we are supposed to be putting it with the state unemployment also. I mean, that's what we used to do unless it changed during COVID, but we absolutely have to put it in the paper.
Qualifications, what are qualifications any required?
Well, you know what? I am going to, I was, I'm going to be looking at her at what we put out the last time, and it, it needs to be updated. And I mean, something that we should probably consider is, does this go to full-time? Because, like I said, our, our population is aging. People are looking for things to do. There are full-time senior center directors, and I'd like you to just think about that. But I will get you a job description before it goes in the paper.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, Harbert, before I go on, I realized I did not make a motion to table some of the commissions, the two Council on Aging and the ZBA alternate. Can I have a motion to table those?
So moved.
Russ, second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I realized I didn't do that. Harbert Woods?
Aye.
Preserve. Okay. There was a letter from Ann, and who is joining us, Ann Asturita. The Conservation Commission was talking with the land trust about a trail. And Ann, maybe you want to talk about it?
Or, thanks. I'm Ann Asturita. I'm the Executive Director at Roxbury Land Trust, for those of you who don't know me. I just wanted to clarify a couple of things that were in the Conservation Commission's minutes about the land trust's interest in some of the town-owned property over on Lower County Road. The land trust had requested permission to build a trail starting from Lower County because our new Harbert Woods Preserve is kind of on that turn on, on Good Hill Road there. It's kind of, it's not the best view if folks want to pull over on the side and get in and out. So we thought that perhaps if we worked with the town and the Conservation Commission that we might be able to do a trail that, on that side. I just wanted to clarify that it was just a request to build a trail, and we'd be at our, at our expense. We don't want to own the land or buy the land or anything like that. It's just a walking trail. So anyway, I just wanted to clarify. Happy to answer any questions that there might be on that. Oh, and I see John Smolaga, one of our board is here, and he can also chime in on that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just add that, you know, as Ann said, when we got the property, you know, the, the idea, well, at least the Harberts would, would have liked, I mean, yeah, the Harberts. Howie and Kathy would have liked to have seen a trail on there, and as Ann said, we, we did look at other alternatives because there's gabble across the road from there, but it probably wouldn't be a good idea to have people playing Dodge Car and 317 going across the, the road to try to get from one preserve to another. So that, that's when we took a look at the property that the town owns, and the idea from the beginning here was to come to the Board of Selectmen and, and talk about this, but we, we thought that, well, let's see if the conservation- we, we thought that, well, let's see if the Conservation Commission wants to get involved too, because we've had, uh, a recent good experience with them in the Pollinator Garden Program. So, um, yeah, that, that's why it started there.
Okay, so what, um, what exactly are, are you asking from the selectmen? Just permission to create this trail?
Well, the, the idea was in the beginning, Barbara, it was to see if the Conservation Commission wanted to, uh, work with us on this. Um, and, you know, e- either way, we would come to you guys with, with a plan. And, uh, there, there was a, um, um, a concept map that, that Jamie Kern had drawn up. He and I had walked the property. And, um, we, we thought that, you know, we wanted to see what they wanted to do before we came to you guys. We, and at that point, Brian F. would put together a proposal with, with a plan to have a trail through that property on Lower County Road there to connect to the Harbert Woods Preserve. We, we didn't expect this to go this far this quickly. So that's why we don't have anything right now, but.
Okay. Because then there was also something about allowing a solar field.
Yeah, that, that was something, you know, I, I emailed Lorenzo about this and well, first actually Erin, because I know her, she forwarded to Lorenzo and he brought this up about putting a power line through that, through the Harbert Woods Preserve. Um, for a solar field to be at, at the, uh, the dump site there. Where it was looked at, I know several years ago.
Yeah.
But, um, you know, that was nothing that we, we had an interest in. I, I told them, well, we'll talk about it and we, we did as, as a board and decided it's not in our interest to allow access through the preserved for power line. It's, it goes against the, uh, the spirit of the gift.
Okay.
And it, it also is not something that we're interested in doing.
Okay. All right. And yes, definitely, um, the solar field was looked at several years ago. Um, we walked all of the top of the closed landfill up there. And, but there was a, uh, an issue with bringing the three-phase in from three seventeen to the transfer station. And the cost, I mean, we did an RFP and had several companies out there and it's just cost was prohibitive for the size of what could be out there.
Sure.
No, no one really bit, you know, to do, to do that. So I didn't know, um, you know, how this was going to be done, but that's fine. I'm just trying to learn more. So we'll just come back to this when we see more of it. I mean, I, I, as it stands right now, I'm not opposed to having a trail go through there. The, um.
I'm all for it.
You know, I don't know.
Bring it on, more trail.
You know, the, as I recall, if this was, uh, seven acres that were given, were given to the town, we even, um, at one time thought maybe it would be a good site for the ambulance when they were looking, but that's all in the past. So I really don't know what it's going to be used for. Anyway, it's, it's a difficult piece of property.
Yeah, there, there's a lot of ledge in there. There's a bernal pool. There's wetlands in there and, yeah.
Okay.
And not to belabor the point, but that also goes into, um, our reasoning for not wanting to put the solar field pipe through there because there is so much ledge and, um, wetland area.
Yeah. I agree. Okay. Um, okay, marijuana legislation. I just put this on here because, uh, you know, it's, uh, new law. And, um, just trying to think ahead of what this town is going to want to do. And I, you know, it's going to fall into zoning's lap, but you know.
Uh, part of it. It's twofold. It's twofold.
Yeah.
We, we're dealing with the use, the legal use of marijuana. Number one, which you can do now. And the second part, starting next July, is the legal sales.
Right.
And the use, I believe, is definitely an ordinance thing. Because zoning deals with land use. And I think it would be, is the whole town needs to say where it can be used. The zoning will take up the sale and location. And obviously, we only have a very small business district. And so it's not going to be difficult to deal with it. But I think the town has to, the, the whole town through an ordinance as far as where it can be used. Can it be used in our town parks, down at the falls, at the pavilion, ball fields, you know?
No, 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 no.
That we need to, you know.
But, um, some towns are banning it, banning the sale of it in the town. They're moving forward with not allowing the sale in the town, which the statute gives towns the right to do. We, we can't, we could regulate the use. We can't ban the use, obviously. And I'm hoping everybody agrees, every, you want to smoke pot, do it on your own property. I don't want my kids.
Correct.
Watching somebody at the falls getting high.
Definitely not going to be on, uh, town properties in the parks or any, have it be allowed.
But do we, do we as a town want to allow the sale of it?
Right.
You could have a home enterprise business, Jim, and my neighbor could be, could be, be a bad thing for me. My neighbor could be selling it, you know? Um, I, I'm hoping that. I, I think Barbara, I wish you would talk to COG about this.
Yeah.
And see what they're all doing because it would be stronger if a lot of towns banned the sale, like the whole county or a lot of the county. I, I think we, we alone doing it doesn't really matter, but I'd like to see us partner up with surrounding towns and ban the sale in this area.
And that, that too, Russ, needs, should be done through, uh, a town-wide ordinance. So everybody can weigh in.
That's right. It's a town thing. Yeah.
Yeah, it's a town thing.
Right.
Five members of the zoning commission, we don't, we can tell the town what to do with their, their property and and where you can sell it. But if the banning to ban all sales in Roxbury, that's up to the whole town.
Right. That's a, it's a, it's a Board of Selectmen issue to bring on. And what I'm doing is asking Barbara to look at the,
Yeah.
Work with COG to see if, I see a couple of towns are doing it. It'd be great if we could get, all get together and ban it. From my, what I hear from my men's, my friends in Massachusetts who have these things in smaller towns, it's a nightmare with traffic, with police. The, you know, people, it's popular. So you got people waiting in line to get this stuff. And I, I don't want to see that here.
Well, we do. We have to, you know, have, I think we have to have a town information meeting, um, and then go from there and draft an ordinance that can be approved. And if people do want to see the sale of it, then that is going to fall under zoning. Or, or would it also, I don't know, would, if the, if we say we're going to ban it, I, I guess you can also put in your regulations that, you know, in the business district, it is not allowed.
Right.
Just to be very clear.
So it's, like I said, it's still twofold. We got two things, the use and the sale. And if the town wants to ban both, then through an ordinance.
You can't ban the use.
Right.
Well, we can ban it, use on town property.
You can regulate it. Yeah, you can regulate it, but you can't ban it outright.
All right. So is that what you think we should do? Get a town information meeting and then, uh, go from there?
I think we should talk to COG first. It seems there's interest in, and then we go from there.
Yeah, okay.
Because then the information meeting, somebody's going to ask, did you talk to other towns in which field county? And the answer is no. Then it's more information to have.
Yep. Okay.
Okay.
Uh, the dog park. We're back to the dog park. And, um, Jason, he was, he could not join us today, but, uh, I put something in your packet that showed where he originally had spoken about having this dog park at the park. He did go, we sent him to go look at, um, uh, Sherman Park. And he came back, you know, and said absolutely everything could fit there. But his preference would still be at Harbert Park because of the facilities there, the parking that's already there. And, um.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Well, it is.
You go to Sherman Park, you're gonna let your dog go. Why put him in a fenced-in area?
Right.
Um, I see where he wants to put it on a corner there.
Yeah.
Um, I, I, that's probably the best place, Jim, you think?
Well, the, the last meeting we had.
Showing there. That's a little bit longer because it's gonna, it's starting to, um, you know, creep into the parking that is there. Overflow parking spot.
When we first saw this a couple of weeks ago, it was further up Rocky Mountain, almost in front of Ralph Barton's.
Yeah.
Now it's down in this corner. I didn't, you know, I didn't have a problem with it further up. And I think it's more level. Down in that corner, it's a big hill.
Yeah. It is. And I mean, it, because he was saying, you know, we could fill it in, uh, put some fill. It just makes it bigger. It's, it's different because it's more of an L shape. But, um, it could certainly start down there and go the other way instead of towards the parking and go up towards what it was before. We can ask him to do that.
Yeah.
Well, I, I, I think he needs to submit a plan knowing now he, Apple Lane is the place he should consider. And I noticed at the meeting, the board asked them to find out if people want a dog park.
Yes.
And maybe you could do an email blast to have people vote, just to get a general idea of what the town's thinking.
Well, he is, um, yes, first of all, he is going to do a poll. He's going to, he's, he's getting some questions. I mean, some of this has to be his doing. It's his senior project.
Right. You're right. Yep.
He's coming up with some questions. He want, you know, once he knows where we are going to give him the okay. And Jimmy Harbert's gonna, you know, feed it into all, to get it as an email blast type thing. But it's a survey where people can answer. So, um, that's his next step. But he is wait, he's waiting to see where, where should he concentrate. And really, um, he can get that out now. I mean, soon, and then still come with a plan. It's just, would you like to have the park?
One, one thing I, one of my concern, it's a pretty expensive senior project. We're, we're gonna be, he's gonna be pushing four grand.
Well, he says he's gonna raise it. It's not our issue, right?
I mean.
And, uh, you know, there, uh, having been a board member on the, um, Senior Project Foundation, he can, I told him, he really has to apply there and they will give him some money. I think that if he goes to, um, you know, Home Depot, Lowe's, whatever, that I'm sure that they would give donations. He's almost like an Eagle Scout project. He's gonna need people to help. But again, he's going to have to figure out what he's going to do because it is his project. It's his senior project. All right. Now the gazebo. I, I was gonna go look at it, didn't get a chance to go look at it. I did leave a message, um, to, for Kirk to say that, yes, the town is interested. I sent you another little map. I was talking about it with Jimmy Harbert. He said, you know, that is the field where the Christmas tree is. And it's over near that other tree. Because Jim, you, I was thinking it would be up in the corner more towards the, the market. And you said, you know, it really needs to be where it's open on all sides.
Right.
So what, what do you, and then I was saying, you know, maybe the library. But what do you think about this where it is? I think it would be nice.
When I saw it, you know, after we talked about the library, and then I saw your packet and what you're thinking about now, would it be used more at the library? And where you have it now, it might be just used at Christmas.
Yeah, I agree.
Well, I don't know, because, um, a couple of years ago, we had, uh, uh, you know, Mark Wager came in and had that concert.
Right.
There.
At the library, people would walk out there on any day of the week and sit and read in the shade of the gazebo.
They got the thinking garden there too, that they could sit and read at.
The contemplation garden is there.
Yeah, well, that's thinking.
But it's, it's nice, it's nice in Muntz and Meadow, but I'm afraid people aren't going to use it on a daily basis. Maybe not even.
Unless you do put it near the market, because when you get lunch there and you want to go outside, it's limited. The seating's limited.
Yeah.
Up in those picnic tables there.
I, I.
I don't know then anybody's gonna walk across a whole field to have a sandwich.
Well, yeah, they might. But I, I mean, I, I do, I think I, I like it there unless, uh, well, what about the field next to the library? But, you know, if you plopped it in the middle of that field, I mean, we don't use it for anything right now. Um.
It's gonna go to the Hornets.
The Hornets?
The Hornets, yeah. They love those things.
Anyway, it's a great idea. We just got to figure out the right spot that it'll get.
I'll tell him, we'll take it. We'll figure it out.
No, I did, I did tell him that.
Yeah, all right.
But it would be nice to know.
Figure it out. I, I like the field. I like the, uh, Muntz and Meadows idea.
Can we put it more towards the store than way down by Lodge Library?
That's what I would do because it'd get used more towards the store. Get your mail, go sit out there and.
Yeah. Not in a corner.
Bill.
Not in the corner, but more in the middle by the Christmas tree that we sing around.
Yeah.
I don't like it near the tree.
Well, not real close, but away from the tree, towards the store halfway.
And, and back a little bit.
Figure it out. With Barbara, it's gonna be like furniture. Move it over here. No, move it over there. And then if it doesn't work, we just bring it to the library. It's not a big deal.
Anyway, okay. Well, we'll figure it out, but we are taking it. They do know that. All right, car registrations. Um, we have some people who rightly so are concerned about uh, people who have moved here and have not registered their plates in the state of Connecticut or in Roxbury. And I saw that, um, Waterbury is targeting out-of-state license plates.
Great idea. Let's do it. Soon as Bill gets back from a surgery, send him on a mission.
Well, I spoke with him. He said, you know, it, it's for using the license plate reader. It is illegal to use it for that. But I mean, you can, and, and if you want to stop.
It's New York or New Jersey.
Huh?
The license plate? What do you mean using a license plate reader for that to find out who they are?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
You have to have a re, and you have to have a reason for stopping them. Um, we have put something, we had something in the tax. We had something in our email blasts. Some people actually have changed, um, and updated.
Ban any out-of-state plates to the transfer station, even if you're here?
No, I don't see how you can do that. People can have, can live in two residents. They can live in two places. They have a house here. They're paying taxes on it.
Is it that big a problem for us or we don't know? I mean, Waterbury's got a big problem. I get it.
Yep. The, you know, the, one of the problems is during COVID, everything was extended, you know? You used to have sixty days to change your, or thirty days to change your license to Connecticut. Sixty days to change your license, your registration. And that was all extended and people got confused or whatever. But also, some people moved here and were not really sure if they were going to stay here.
Right.
Now that people are, are deciding to stay, they do need to change over. So.
All right, do an email blast to let them know rather than.
I have, I have done that.
You have. Okay.
Times already. And it, and it also had something in the tax bill. So hopefully we will see. Um, I did speak with somebody the other day and they are going to be switching their, their plate over. And I think that that's just how we're gonna have to do it, is just pick away at it.
Yeah, I, I heard some people were going back because it's too, too boring here. So some people are making a decision not to be here full-time. As things get better COVID-wise, but who knows?
I, I, that I, I don't know. I do know that some people are definitely staying here. But it's something that we, um, really do need to keep, keep an eye on and try to keep it front and center and, and try to go after people to remind them that they need to change their plates over. So, um, I, I was up at the transfer station. Couple Saturdays ago, I stayed there the entire day. And there were a few New York plates, but, um, they, uh, they have two homes. So it's, you know, it's.
Again, it's not easy.
No. All right. So anyway, tires at the transfer station. We just had such an increase in the bill for tires that I'm just wondering, I want to just throw it out there about starting to charge. The tires went from like $40 a piece for the large tires to $85.
That's our cost?
Huh?
That's our cost?
Yes. And I called, um, the place that comes and picks these tires up and I said, what, what happened here? And they said, a, a lot happened. We used to be able to, we used to get paid for the tires. And, um, now we have to pay to get them out of here and we have to pay a lot of money to get them out. So the problem with charging for tires is that they'll probably be on the side of the road, some of them. But, um, what I don't understand is, you know, when people go and they, they get new tires, they bring their old ones here. Uh, they should just pay to have them.
You don't even pay it at, uh, Tom Fair Tower. It's part of the price.
But then, but some people, they bring them here because it's free to, to get rid of.
Tom Fair Tire.
Car and bring them back here. Some of these tires are just, uh, you know, that might be on land. Uh, you know, people are cleaning up their property and they're finding some old tires and that happens. And it might be a tractor tire. And so all these years, those things have been free. But now we're getting hit, um, you know.
Yeah, then, then charge 25 bucks a tire, I guess. It's a deal if we're paying 85.
I know.
I mean, if you make it 85, Barb, you are going to find it on the side of the road and you're going to have to pay town crew to be picking up.
No, I'm not, I'm not suggesting 85 at all. Um, I don't, I don't even know.
I think they charge based on the size of the tire.
Yep.
The big truck tires are expensive and a little tire off a Subaru is not going to be $85.
No, no, the larger tires are 85 and now the smaller ones are almost 50.
Wow.
So I, I did, I argued with them and said, I, we weren't paying it, but we do have to pay it. So, uh, oh boy, somebody's knocking on my door. Wait a minute. So what do you, what do you, what would you like to?
Let's think about it. I'd like to talk to other towns or find out from Cog what, what other towns do about tires.
Okay, I do know that.
More educated cost.
All right. They, they do charge in this, in our surrounding towns.
I do, I know that, but I forget how much.
Okay. Um.
Way to start and to back it up.
So anyway, I just wanted to report that our town hall security, um, upgrade and i- is going along. And, um, a lot of the, um, locks and things are in place. But we're moving, we're also moving along with getting software that we were going to have, um, installed. That's still moving along, but a lot of the, a lot of the things are, you know, in place to where we're going to be able to, um, get things going with, uh, you know, how we're going to access the town hall with the fobs and all of that. The wiring's been done. Now they're putting in a lot of the metal stuff. And, uh, so anyway, it's, I just wanted to say it is moving along. It's slower than we had anticipated, but it is moving along. Okay, the painter hill and squire culverts. Cardinal engineering is going to, um, draw up something that I can go out to bid with to get those two repaired. I have to have something that everybody can bid the same. It can't be, look at this. How can you, what would you do to replace it? Everybody's got to be looking at the same thing. Um, I just wanted to let you know that that's moving along. So the Shippag River update. Russ.
That's me. Somehow I'm the, I became the leader of the Shippag River, uh, watching Waterberry's compliance with the agreement of 12.6 million gallons a day. And the newspapers have, again, again, I don't know why. They've misreported this issue, which has caused issues. So I want to make things very clear. I'm working with Rob Langolier. He's the superintendent of the Waterberry, uh, Water Company. He comes from the MDC, the Metropolitan Water District out of Hartford. He knows what he's doing. Uh, he's replaced all his managers over, over the year he's been there. It's a good team in Waterberry. They know what they're doing. I've stepped up to the plate because Edwin Matthews, who was dealing with all this in a great way. Edwin's a true environmental leader. He, but he doesn't have the time. So I've stepped up as a volunteer to coordinate with Waterberry to make sure that they abide by their agreement. They have a lot of updates going on and I want to con, I want to stress to the newspapers that the relationship couldn't be better between Waterberry and the, the Shepug Valley Association, Shepug River Valley Association. We are working together to make sure that the upgrades, uh, there's a valve in the Karen's reservoir. That's three quarters of way stuck. That means the reservoirs, the Shepug reservoirs that directly feed the river haven't really, have been the sole source uh, in the last three years, but they got the part, they're going to be replacing that. And going forward, we're going to work together, me and Rob, to ensure that the, uh, agreement is abided by in a friendly way. And that could be done because it's right online. I could watch every day how much water is going into the river. And we're not going to be paying consultants going forward as far as I, I'm in control because I'm looking for volunteers to help me manage this as opposed to having a paid consultant. Uh, whenever going forward, whenever there is a consultant that's needed, before a contract is signed, both towns and both, uh, the land trust and the steep rock association will be made aware of what it is we need, how much money we need and why we need it. And you're going to be told that you're not going to be just sent the bill and say, here, this is your share. It's not going to happen anymore. But I'm very positive. The relationship that I built with Waterberry and Rob is great and, um, the river's gonna, gonna be great because of it. And the towns and the land trust, I doubt will. But the goal is to have cooperation and protect the river. And I'm, you know, it's, it's the guy who stepped up to, uh, take this over. I guarantee you that's what's going to happen. So thanks.
Well, thanks for, uh, taking up, taking over because, yeah, I didn't, uh, like getting bills for something that I didn't even realize was happening. People were being hired consultants and then just here pay this was like, no.
And we paid, we paid the last bill, right, Barbara? I, I think.
One, we paid one bill earlier, early on. It was, what was it? 1,200?
1,200, but wasn't there another bill of 20 something? 2,000, have we paid that bill?
No, I, we haven't paid anything else.
We should pay that bill and that's something the board should vote on now. I think we should pay that bill. I, I agree that maybe the communication wasn't what it should be. It will be going forward, but that bill really was for a consultant to evaluate what was going on in Waterberry. Um, and, and a lot came out of it. I think it was a reasonable, uh, cost. I'm not in favor of us paying bills to look at Waterberry's conservation plan because that's not our job. That's the state's job. It's not our job. That has nothing to do with the agreement, so I'm not in favor of paying a, a bill for that kind of stuff. Um, but I think we should pay that bill as a goodwill gesture. And my recommendation to the board of selectmen should be going forward, we're not going to pay any more bills unless we sign on before you even hire somebody that builds us and we need a number. It can't be, well, we don't know how many hours. It could be 10 hours. It could be 50 hours. We don't know.
Right.
Um, right now they're asking for $10,000 just as a starter. And I'm delving into it saying, for what? For what? We don't need consultants. I don't need a consultant.
No.
See how much water's going in the river. I don't need a consultant to tell me that.
How much is this bill that is outstanding?
$2,100.
That was 25, I think.
25, but two years ago, we did agree to contribute $5,000. And we haven't contributed all of that. So this is part of that. It's just that the communication isn't there. It's, it's get the bill and then send it. Instead of warning us that we've retained somebody to do this. And this is what the bill's going to be and you're going to get it in this month. As you know, Barbie, can't run government that way. Where, okay, here's a bill. Okay, we'll pay it. We, we have to approve it if it's not in the budget. So I'm asking the board, and I have to abstain because I have a conflict being on this, on the committee. Uh, I'm asking the board to approve paying that bill, please.
All right, I have a question though. You're saying, yes, we did a while ago say that we were going to contribute $5,000 towards this initiative. And you're saying that we only paid half of it?
Yeah, I mean, you haven't gotten any other bills. I asked Kim, you haven't gotten any other bills in two years, but a $1,200 bill.
I thought, I thought we gave the 5,000 just out.
I asked you to look into that because it, we didn't know and, and you said we didn't. And you told me.
The, the 5,000 was a couple of years ago, wasn't it?
I just don't know. So why are we getting bills? That's, that's my question. I mean, where, as I told Edwin, we're not an environmental committee. We, we can't use taxpayer money to support environmental causes. That's, that's just not right. Um, you have to go out and, and ask people to contribute on their own. But if we, if we said we would support this, then we will pay the bill. And he said that you did. About two years ago, you said you'd put in up to $5,000. And I haven't sent you more than, uh, 3, $4,000. So you did, you did say that you would, you would pay these bills. Well, I said, okay, I'll go to the board and ask, but going forward, Edwin, we're not paying anything unless we agree to it before you sign any contract.
Okay, I, um, I thought we paid $5,000 just at that time. So if you're saying no, then.
Well, we did, and you could find out for Kim, then my recommendation would be we're done.
Can we get some more information on this, Barbara? You know?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay. Um, that's it.
Okay.
Thank you, Russ. Thanks for taking that on and yeah.
Thanks, Russ.
Yeah, thanks, Jim.
Can't pay bills that come in. I have no idea what they are. And while we're just, I'm going to just slip this in because I got a call today. Does anybody know anybody that rakes ponds? I know, I, they're really looking for someone. Anyway, if you know, you can tell me after the meeting.
They, they could call a guy who does the pesticide stuff. You know, the herbicide on ponds. But I doubt it. It's a big machine.
I don't know. I don't know.
Big machine. It's nothing. They, they make them only for big rivers like the Hoosie they have it on there.
Well, if you can think of anyone.
Well, they could get a guy in a boat to rake it.
Well, they're looking for that guy.
Russ D'Enzo.
You need somebody. Um, okay, I gave you the fire marshal's report, uh, July, there really were no meetings or anything, um, complaints, she said, small incident at the transfer station. There was a little fire up there.
Yeah, somebody put his fireplace ashes in there. I mean, really?
I mean, how did they make it all the way to the transfer station?
Well, you know, it takes time, but boy, once it goes, that whole bin was up. Albert did a great job keeping it from getting damaging anything. Albert and Jim, have to, my hat's off to them for that.
Yep, yep. Um, they've pulled several tanks and, um, and then let's see what else they got in. There's a modification for Mr. Debo for an additional display barn on his property and that was all approved. And that's, that's actually old news. That was June. And then you have the, um, resident troopers report. So it's just that we will accept these reports as presented. There's really nothing.
Do you need a motion?
I don't know that we, sure, you can make a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept these reports as presented.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And, and going back to the police report, the biggest thing is, you know, thefts from the, from motor vehicles. It's just people need to be locking their cars at night. And it's still going on. We haven't had any thefts recently, but the surrounding towns have.
Yeah, it's out there.
You know, it's just coming around. It keeps coming around. So. All right, any other business?
Nope.
Good.
Okay.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that, Russ.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have a good month. Bye.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Yep, bye bye. Thank you, Julie.
You're welcome.